Our organizational meeting for July 8, 2025. Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
President right now.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Prime of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord is with us.
In the unlikely event of an emergency, we have exits to our sides and to the back.
Bellarosa, here. Katie Emerson Haas, here. Michelle Grimalia, you're good, I'm here. Robert Toman.
Here.
Sakina Yarzera.
Here.
Carol Kelder.
Here.
Michael Meyer.
He's on the line.
Jeffrey Riazzi.
Here.
And Tim Wells.
Here.
We'll entertain a motion to appoint our new district clerk, Ms. Virginia Carney. Although she's not in attendance tonight, we will swear her in if it's approved.
So moved. I'll second it.
Kelder. Grimalia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Point of order. If the new board members who have not been sworn in, are they eligible to vote on these?
Yes, I think yes, it's okay. Yes, it's okay.
Cherry says yes.
Yes.
Okay. We'll now administer the oath of office to our two new board members.
Bellarosa.
Long-term member now.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Ed trustee.
Thank you. Toman.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Ed?
I just need to sign. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I wanted to open the floor for nominations for Board President. Have any nominations?
I nominate Jeffrey Riazzi.
Sorry, who seconded it? Okay. Are there any other nominations for Board President? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. President, Mr. Riazzi. I would like to open the floor for nominations for the Board Vice President.
I nominate Kate Emerson Haas.
I'll second it. Are there any other nominations for Board Vice President? All in favor for Katie Emerson Haas as Vice President, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Katie Emerson Haas. The President.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of Board of Ed Education according to the best of my ability. I will.
Congratulations, Mr. Riazzi. Miss Katie Emerson Haas, can you please raise your right hand?
I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of Board of Ed according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mrs. Emerson Haas.
I'm meeting them. Thought you were gonna finish what you started.
He's all three now.
Yeah, great. Okay, we have. Just reading through it, yeah, yeah, see. Accept a motion for the approval of our annual appointments resolution, which has our hearing officers, and then a series of all the appointments that are required for the district to have. So it's items one and then items two A through Q Q.
So moved. Seconded out.
Haas, seconded by Ms. Grimalia. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is D, accept a motion for our designations resolution, which is everything from the official paper to the school to our bank deposits. And our different hearing officials. So it's items D 1A through H. By Ms. Bellarosa.
Seconded.
By Mr. Wells, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other items. Accept a motion for authorizations resolution. Our official bank accounts, the petty cash funds, et cetera. So it's items E 1A through S, and then our health services contract, our non-resident special education student, tuition students, and then future board meeting dates for the 2025-26 school year. Motion. By Ms. Kelder, seconded by Ms. Bellarosa, any questions on any of that?
I just want to point out with the calendar, the board calendar, that it does not appear that we're attending any of the elementary schools. So those who are listening and are used to having to go to the elementary schools October through January, those are not going to happen this year, and they're all going to be here in this room. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, and just to go on, that's a great question, Christine. What we had said was, there were a couple of reasons we did that, we made that change. Number one is the audio and all that in the different elementary schools is very difficult. I'll call out Ricardi specifically, when we were in the gymnasium there, we had a ton of people who said we could barely hear anything anybody was saying. And then also, it is, while there are a few students that present to us and go through it, we thought, we had a discussion that we just felt that it would, there'd be a better way, and that we'll discuss it in August and September, to engage the elementary schools, to have the board, you know, either go visit the schools at different points, to where it will involve a larger portion of those particular elementary schools as opposed to one meeting for a couple hours, you know, in the middle of November or December. So that was the thinking behind that, but great question, so.
And the students having to be there late and stuff like that.
Exactly, right. So, any other questions or discussion, yeah, go right ahead.
What is the nature of the special meeting on August 26?
So that is typically, we have that meeting at the end because there are typically a bunch of hiring that's happening now that needs to be approved before the start of the school year.
Okay.
Yep.
You're good.
Yeah. Okay, any other ones? Great questions, though. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. A motion to adjourn the organizational meeting component of tonight. By Ms. Kelder.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Wells, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're not leaving, we're just switching agendas. Let me do it now, I'll make the motion and move it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let me just find it here, where do we have it?
F.
Personnel.
Oh, yeah. Like to make, have a motion to move appointments to tenure resolution, F. I used to do all of F. And move that from where it is on the agenda to right after public comment.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Bellarosa, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We don't need all the. So this is now the regular meeting of the Board of Ed for July 8, 2025. First two items are the approval of minutes of June 10, and then June 30, the two different meetings we had in June. And due to that, Mr. Toman was not at those meetings, he's asked for it to be a roll call as opposed to a blanket approval. So, Ms. Gardner, when we get to that point, if you could do a roll call vote for these. So, a motion to accept the minutes by Ms. Bellarosa, seconded by Mr. Wells, any discussion? Ms. Gardner.
Christine Bellarosa. Yes. Katie Emerson Haas.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Robert Toman.
Upstate.
Sakina.
Yes.
Carol Kelder.
Yes.
Jeffrey Riazzi.
Yes.
Tim Wells.
Yes. Okay. All right, now is the public comment portion of the meeting. Anybody who wishes to address the board, now is the time to do so. I'm not going to read this whole paragraph, but it is, it's an opportunity for anybody in the public who wants to address it. We have in there three minutes, we're not gonna, you know, at 2:59, we're not gonna, I never touch the gavel, or will I ever use the gavel? But just, you know, as you, as you start to, as you frame your comments, just keep that in mind. So, anybody who wishes to address the board, now is the time. Yeah, yeah, you can.
If you could just turn the mic on.
Yeah, I don't know why we don't have a chair there, just pick it up. Yeah.
It's like, get up.
Stand if you want.
Give me that chair.
Yeah, oh, yeah, just state your name and.
My name is Travis Wenchel. I did reach out to you, Mr. Riazzi, in an email requesting to speak in executive session, but I didn't receive an email back. I don't know if that was intentional, or you didn't get my email.
You didn't receive an email back?
I did not.
I responded, I copied Dr. Haas on it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and just so you know, I will, so I'll give you the, I'm happy, I'm glad you're here tonight. The email, which I responded back to today, I apologize, it was earlier today, was, I appreciate you reaching out to expect an executive session, but I think the more appropriate thing would be to address in public comment. So I think we're doing exactly what my email would have said, so thank you.
I just wanted to start off and say, you know, I was the SRO here. Many of you I do know, many of your kids I do know, and many of you I don't know. Many of you have formed opinions about me that don't even know me. Who have not taken the chance to get to know me, nor have even talked to me. I've worked here for seven years. I started here in September of 2018. Class of 2019 was my first graduating class I was here. I do speak with many of those students, still have connections with them, and so on and so forth. The reason I am here is because I am actually calling this, you know, I didn't prepare a speech because I think everything should come directly from me, from the heart. I think it was very one way that I didn't get to talk or say my piece about when Dr. Ursig and my chief, when we sat in the chief's office, decided that it was the board's decision as well as Dr. Ursig's decision to get rid of me as the SRO. I think I've done a lot of work here over the years, I've created a lot of relationships with parents, students, staff. I've worked very closely with Dr. Ursig ever since he was assistant principal here, Mrs. Vale, who is sitting behind me, the junior high principal, even before she was the junior high principal, Mrs. Malino, Mr. Malino, and many other administrators that we've had here. I come in every day, I, you know, do my checks, I check the doors, my priority is student safety as well as also protecting the staff that are in this building as well. You know, very far between, unfortunately, did I get to go to elementary schools unless there was a problem, I mean, students received my part of it, you know, you'll be able to start. Kelder, Marion, it's just puzzling to me, it's puzzling to a lot of my, you know, workmates, my colleagues at the police department, people in town on why I was, you know, even let go. I told a student, well, I didn't tell, I'll be honest, and I was honest right from the get-go about everything, that I yelled at a student and told him to knock it off when the student was acting up. And since that moment, and then I also spoke to the mother when she got here, which was recorded, I know about the letters that were sent, you know, to the chief and so on and so forth. Some of them had truthful things in them, and some of them did not. I never got to say it, but I don't think that I, you know, for discipline reasons, I shouldn't be let go here, being that I had to here basically until I decided that I was going to retire. And I've been with this incoming senior high class, the incoming 12th grader, since they were, we did the drive-up COVID graduations. And I thought that would be, you know, something exciting to do, however, you know, I guess telling a student to knock it off is the wrong thing to do these days. I didn't, I was upfront and honest with everybody right from the beginning on what transpired and what I did. And again, I don't understand it, and there's, a lot of people don't understand it, and I still have yet to get a clear answer from anybody. I've never had a disciplinary letter sent to me. Mrs. Vale asked me if I got a letter, I did not get a letter. I have not had any private conversations with anybody about this. The only conversation I had was with the chief and Dr. Ursig, and that's where he told me that it was his decision that they didn't want me here anymore. He also talked about other, you mentioned another name before you pulled back, that was Mrs. Pipitun, who I also worked with before. You know, it's life, not everyone has to get along or whatever, but when everyone comes down, we're all professionals here and we all work very well and very hard together. You know, when we were doing the Mullen scholarships, Cahill had an issue, and I had to leave the scholarships to take care of an issue over at Cahill. So I'm available all the time, 24/7, I'll answer my phone when I'm on vacation because if a student needs me, I'm there. I have spent thousands of dollars on my students, I help all my students, I'm there for everybody. Through COVID, all the N L students, Atlanta bought, everybody a ton of groceries and delivered them with Mrs. Conston, who is no longer here, all hygiene supplies, everything that they would need, laundry detergent, everything. Also, you know, with that being said, with those students, I also addressed them, some of them came to talk to me because they were afraid of, you know, getting deported or whatever, and I addressed the whole class and told them there was nothing to worry about, had nothing to worry about. You know, there's a lot of people that I don't think know exactly what I do here on a daily basis, I do more than just check the works. I'm here all the time, I'm here all the time without pay. For me, it's not about the pay, it's about the students. That's what this whole thing is about, it's not about me, it's not about, it's about the students. And I do help everybody. And I do help everybody. And I don't think some people quite understand that. I've had administrators come up to me and be like, Travis, what happened? I'm like, that's a good question because I still don't really know. All I know is that I, you know, basically told the student to knock it off and that was that. And I do hear many things, this town is very small. I know one of the former board members did not care for me here. And I, you know, him and complaining at the coffee shop all the time and people listen and, you know, but it's not my job to, you know, it's not my business what they talk about when they're at the coffee shop. But unfortunately, my name is brought up a lot. I would just like to say that I truly do.
Take your time.
I do care about the students. And I would like everyone to reconsider and let me finish out my year here that I have left. And people do make mistakes, we're human. And I can work together with anybody. There is an issue which had ever come to me, I mean, if there was an issue, some of the principals would come to me and say, hey, can we work on this? Yes, yes we can. And we figure it out. In this instance, none of that ever took place for me, just like you're out. Again, this isn't just about me, it's about the students that I help every day, about the families that I help. Sometimes I help a little bit too, it's not just the individual students. I don't favoritize or prioritize any student whatsoever, I bet. There's multiple students here, some, you know, I, they will go to their teachers and say, I need someone to talk to. Some of them will say, you know, there's a transfer student who might have come to down their teacher to come talk to me because they find me because I was in the hall somewhere. They felt comfortable talking to me. Help that student out, I help everybody out. It's not just one student, it's not just four students, it's everybody. Help everybody out, help staff out, everyone. It's not just one student. It's not fair to say that I do that. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're moving F. Anyone else? Okay. So based on our motion before, we're going to move to, we're moving F ahead of the presentation and honorings and the superintendent's reports. So you want me to call out the tenures?
I'll call them out.
You'll announce them, okay, all right, perfect. Okay, so a motion to accept personnel, instructional and non-instructural, which includes a bunch of resignations, a leave of absence, some appointments, substitutes and volunteers, and then our appointments to tenure. Motion?
So moved.
By Ms. Kelder, seconded by Ms. Belarosa. Any questions?
Yep. Still learning.
No, no, go right ahead.
Is it customary that we would take resignation notices so far in advance? In certain cases, it's like 2028, 2020.
So contracts, there are certain benefits if you give three years' notice, if you give two years' notice or one year's notice, so that is why.
Yeah, so benefits to their retirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those letters for planning purposes.
Yeah.
And then it lets us plan.
Great question though, good question.
I just, it surprised me, so.
Yeah.
I've lost a brook to figure out here.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Dr. Ursig.
Right.
Appointments to tenure.
Captain Fires, congratulations.
Peter Amora, I don't think is with us.
Can't believe if you give tenure, they'll graduate with my son.
Not with us. Christina Farrell. Tim Carlisle. Desiree Steyer.
Desiree.
Mr. Lee. Dr. Jenny Schreiber, not here. James Camprose. All right, so thank you to those.
Congratulations, everyone.
And in the crowd, we also have Ms. Kraft, who's getting appointed tonight. You've got to point it as the MTSS coordinator.
Nice.
Oh, Marissa Saricuzano, she also got appointed as a teacher at Cahill.
Who's saved?
Miss Little.
Nice. Okay, so now we're back on regular agenda, which is presentations and honorings, Dr. Ursig.
Still your mic.
Yeah.
So June 27th, we had the honor to recognize 212 of our seniors graduating walking across the stage. That night doesn't happen without some very important players who are probably going to be upset with me calling them out. So first and foremost, Ms. Keef, secretary at senior high, orchestrates really the entire thing with her crew behind her. Our custodial maintenance crew, they take pride in the work that they do, so we thank them. It's always an honor to have the VFW American Legion there for our colors. The SHS Band and Choir, Mr. Speerig was able to conduct the band one last time. We also need to thank Rebecca McDougall, Bernard Speerig, Joan Jensen, Aaron Bynes is still at Giraffe. Up in the booth was Greg DeSalle, live streaming, Mr. Wickham, oh sorry, Greg DeSalle with the sound, Mr. Wickham, live streaming, Andrea Maurer, as well as Jackie Hayes. So thank you to everybody who, who makes that evening special for everybody. All right, with that, we'll go to our presentations for tonight. First, I wanted to talk about our district enrollment instructional model. And then I wanted to have Dr. Kapler just give a highlight, high-level overview of our district guidance plan for that. Do you have a copy of that record or no? Hope so. Can you, can you send her? So based off our last board meeting conversation, I just wanted to put the numbers up that I verbally shared, but I think it's looking at the numbers as a graph, I think kind of tells a very clear picture as to the trend and status of enrollment. So I'll take you through that tonight and talk about steps moving forward.
Yes, you're allowed to leave. That's why we moved it up.
Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations.
Robert, can you advance the slide? What?
Math, actually.
Our district's minor, our district mission and vision, right, our vision to become the beacon of educational excellence where every individual is inspired to achieve their fullest potential. Next slide.
Okay, so this shows our historical data, our enrollment data from 95 all the way to 2022. Now, I chose this graph specifically because this is publicly available data, right? This is not me going back into archives, this is me going to a website from Cornell University and pulling the data, so anybody can verify what I'm showing today, okay? So I picked the year 2004, 2005. At that time, our district enrollment was 3,425 students, right? You can see it teetering, but oh, they're obviously downward trend. So 21, 22, we've got 2,363 students, so a drop of roughly 1,100 students over that time period, okay? Next slide, Rocko. Right, this is just kindergarten through sixth grade, so this is just enrollment, our elementary rooms. Same two kind of markers, right? So from 1,670 down to 1,156, right? So a drop of 500 students in that time period, right? Seven through 12, similar. In this building, we had 1,755 students down to 1,142 students, okay? That is just this building, seven through 12, right? And just kind of timeframe-wise, around this time, I think was when the last capital project was, right? So we had this many students in these occupying smaller space because the media center wasn't built, right, the science rooms were updated and all those things. So we have, it's about, what, 600 less students occupying these halls for that, okay? Next. This is what we generate on a daily basis in terms of our enrollment. So this was as of June 2025, so at the last day in June, here's our enrollment in the district at the elementary level. So you can see, because the narrative that I keep on hearing is that our buildings are overcrowded, right? As you can see, we've got less students overall, but we're still operating in three buildings versus four buildings at the elementary level. So if we look at this, I'll just take one row going across kindergarten. Contractually, we have a cap of 23 students. We have 56 students in Cahill who are classified as kindergarten. If we take out students who are going to be in self-contained programs, that means there's going to be 54 students in a kind of a general education setting or in a co-talk setting, okay? Number of sections, we're going to say, well, we have three, we had three. The average class size was 18, so 18 students in a class. Now, that's the average, right? So there might be some, there might be some weird reason why one class ended up with 24, one might have had 16, right? Because students come and go throughout the year. But if you look at the pure numbers divided by section size, we've got a class size of 18. Same thing reading all the way down. So that means at Cahill last year, the average class size was 20.3 overall, okay? Sixth grade was the highest at 27 because we did have 54 students in there, all right? So why is this important? Because if we look at the number of seats that remain, right? So kindergarten last year, we could have actually, at Cahill, educated 15 more students, right? It's still been under the contractual caps. In first grade, we could have educated nine more students and not had any issues. So in that building alone, we had 120 empty seats that could have had kids in them, okay? So when people are saying that our buildings are at capacity, or there's kids everywhere, we're a school, we're going to occupy every space in the building, right? Whether we have 500 kids there, whether we have 200 kids, we're still going to use every classroom for a purpose. We're not going to have empty rooms floating around. So the narrative that we're at capacity by these numbers tells a very different story, okay? Just something else to point out, like, so if we look at, just for argument's sake, fourth grade, 63 students overall, 57 in general ed settings, so that means we've got, what, six students who are in a self-contained program? Some of those students do push out mainstream for certain classes, maybe math, science, English, social studies, maybe specials or so forth. So we do have to leave space for them to push out so that we don't go over the contractual limit as well. That's how we look at that. So that means at Grant D. Morris, we've got two sections of every grade level, we had 90 seats remaining. At Riccardi, we had 133 seats where we could have had students in those spots, okay? Did we use every space in the building? Absolutely, 100%, and we will, we will continue to, no matter what our enrollment is. All right, next slide.
Wait, Dan, before you want, can I ask questions?
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Please.
Yeah.
So.
But if you could ask them using the mic, so that's sort of.
Yeah, that way online can hear.
People online can't hear.
Yeah.
So Dan, turn it on. Turn it on. So this data really kind of speaks for itself. Where it says grade 530 slash 25 on the caps?
Sure, so I kept this going from when we did our reorganization placement fast. Contractually, you can have 30 students in a class, kind of a target was 25.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, this data is very clear, what do you attribute the narrative to?
I mean, I would love for more people to ask questions, right? Instead of kind of conjuring up these ideas in their minds and saying it, right? When you go, when you go to Riccardi in the morning on the drop-off line, I've got kids there, right? I know it's not pleasant, right? But at the same time, our hallways are not empty. And I'll show you in a second, Riccardi, which had, next. Riccardi, which had a total of.
This is projected.
And one more slide back.
Projected slide, just so you know.
There you go.
416 last year, there was a time when they had over 500 students in that room, right? I think more students took the bus and walked than get dropped off. So, but I'm not necessarily sure where the narrative exactly comes from, but, you know, we are going to occupy every space. Like, Grant D. Morris right now, they have one classroom that is a full-size classroom, it's shared between, shared services provider, we have a speech teacher in there and a special educator goes in there, and then we've got one classroom just dedicated to OTPT. So we're going to use every space.
Does this data go to the school building union reps to give to their members so that they know, so at least they've got the data and can't perpetuate the narrative? Or, you know, you can't stop parents, but.
Yeah, so I've.
But you can't stop anybody, bro, but, I mean, at least give them the data.
Yeah, I mean, I have shared, so contractually, I have to provide the number of sections in June every year. So I, I have shared this data, I can continue to do so.
And I just think one of the, you know, you know, part of the narrative too is, you know, if we looked at Cahill this year, which does have a fair number of students, when there was a flood, that classroom had to get reallocated to an art room. So when we say there's room for students, there's not a whole lot of wriggle room for space, I guess would be a concern, right?
So my response to that would be, right? So yes, we did relocate them to the art room because that was more convenient because the art room isn't utilized, you know, five days a week because of the rotation. In that room, in the basement alone, we have a conference room, we have a staff workroom as well. So we could have relocated them to those rooms too, but that was easier because of the path of the hallway.
There's no extra classrooms, we're like at capacity for classrooms.
I'm always going to use every classroom in every building, I'm always going to. I'm always going to have a person designated to a spot. Elementary, we can talk about Cahill more, right? So they actually have a faculty room on the bottom of the basement floor. They have a faculty room, a copy room, which is a decent-sized room on the second floor. And then the third floor, there's actually a workspace up there as well. So this is our projected enrollment for September, just following the top line for kindergarten, right? So right now, we've got 37 kids signed up for Cahill kindergarten. Kindergarten overall has only has 134 students in it right now, right? We do know that kindergarten, I think, last year, 25 new students joined us over the course of the year. Seven were at Cahill. So we just graduated a class with 212 students. Our incoming kindergartners is 134 students, right? Even if we get 10 more, right, that's still a significant drop.
40 more.
Okay.
Dan, you, you mentioned, you said as of right now, there's 37 signed up. Do you typically see, I know during the year, but by September, do people tend to sign up during the summer?
Yeah.
Is that pretty much going to be the number come?
Right, so when I was speaking with Heidi, who. Right, so when I was speaking with Heidi, who, the kids we know about, at least for Cahill, we believe that most of them have signed up. Maybe I, I, I think exactly what she said, but she said most have signed up there. Cahill tends to be our most kind of transient population. So I was kind of err on the side of caution.
Got it.
For that one. So like 37 kids, we could actually provide instruction just in two classes. But like last year, we got seven kids there. So do we want to add another section mid-year? Or is it better to play it safe if we can afford it, right? To have a third section there? Class sizes might be small, but we might get kids in there as well.
And they're in kindergarten, so that's.
They're in kindergarten, it's also a ENL building, right? So even if a student lives in Riccardi, they do get transportation to Cahill, right, it tends to be higher needs for that. Well, you can see, right, the next biggest class is the next year's eighth, or sixth, sorry, sixth grade, 184 students. But as you look at these numbers, right, all the class sizes, right? Average class size, 18.6, 19.8, 18.8. Will there be pockets of higher class sizes? 100%, right? Because that's the model that we have. Overall, we're right, 20 kids per class, okay? Cahill enrollment, all right? Once again, I picked these years by keeping track with the 20, oh, I'm sorry, 2004, 2005, 21, 22, and then the 23, 24. I didn't show last year on this because I got the data right from New York State, right? Anybody can go onto data.nyc.gov, type in a school, everything is publicly there. So you can check everything on the site, okay? Cahill had 505 students. The year before we reorganized, they had 262 students walk in the hall, right? Now they're back up to 412. So this is probably part of the narrative, right? Because there's definitely more kids there. But is that capacity though? Right, two separate questions. Does it feel more crowded in the hallways? 100%.
Still 100 less than 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Same building.
Same building.
But, Dan, can I ask another question? And this kind of goes to just comparing '04, '05 to now, nowadays, I guess. And, you know, are the classrooms being utilized differently now when they, than they were back then? Like, the needs of our students are changed. So like back then, did we have dedicated PT, OT, behavioral rooms, redirect centers, all of that when you were educating 505 students versus the 412? So are you utilizing your space differently now where the capacity at 412 seems a little more crowded than maybe when you had the 505?
So I have to defer to Dr. Capper on that one. Sorry to call you out. But I, I'm thinking so just because, right? We've got dedicated space for our, for our students who need specialized reading instruction, right, Wilson reading instruction. That's, that's a new addition, right? In that building, we've got two speech teachers, right? They've got, or one and a half. So they share space. We have, you know, special educators who do push into classes, but then also kind of have an office space there. So I can't speak to the number of sections that we used to have in each grade level, but my assumption is that we're very different makeup now than we were back then. But Dr. Capper, do you want to add anything?
We definitely had spaces for the OTPT. They're nicer spaces right now because they're like full classrooms. But before, it would be like where we would have maybe a resource room was a smaller room. Now they have a full room, but they do share it. PT and OT would be together. We definitely had it by '04.
Riccardi, similar, so '04, '05, 488, 352, and then 423. I think it was the next school year, '05, '06, where they had like, they were over 500 kids. Morris Elementary, this is more consistent, 319, 295, and then 305. Once again, I chose these numbers because anybody can go onto this website, search up the school, look it up, and just verify my information, okay? Junior high enrollment, 563, 366, 362, okay? I think when I graduated like 2002, I think we had graduated class around 240, right?
That's based on the, based on the numbers. Like you said, this year was 212. That's an entire graduating class we lost. That's 200 students. We are down one full graduating class.
Senior high. All right, so now it's fourth grade versus the two. 1,192, 776, 768. So we're kind of plateauing, right? It also follows the trend on the big graph from before, okay? But once again, right, so same building, maybe even a little bit smaller depending on when the construction took place around here, right? With, I do the math, we're.
Two graduating classes.
Two graduating classes.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. It's unbelievable, wow.
Okay, so a proposed path forward. I think the first component of this is going to be a formal enrollment study, right? With an independent consultant who's going to answer, kind of go through and look at these questions, right? So looking at contacting the building departments, the town, the village, checking out new construction, right? The impacts of recently completed construction, I'll share a little bit on that. The average family size in the United States is down. It's also down in New York, right? Housing supply, especially in the village, right? We're kind of almost at a capacity of housing supply. And then the impact of short-term rentals, right? It's just been a hot topic for those things. So I would like an independent person to come in and kind of do the same thing, right? Because once again, I'm sharing these numbers, anybody can access. There's always going to be kind of doubters. So we can get somebody to come in and kind of verify and tell me if I'm wrong, really.
I'd be curious also to know the, the, what is the enrollment in the various private schools over the last 20 years?
So, good question. So when we visited Middleway as part of their substantial equivalency, we had asked that. And they had said, actually, a lot of their students are actually from out of the district and come there. So I don't necessarily know that it's taking away sorority students for that.
Just curious.
We do, in sororities, from my conversations, do have a higher number of students who are, receive home, or.
School.
Home schooled. We have like 150-ish.
That's a whole graduating class.
Yeah.
They are also.
Kindergarten class.
They told us.
Dan, are you concerned about a declining tax base also with declining enrollment?
So, in terms of tax base, right? So we approve the budget and then it's based on assessments how that is, right? So I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily know that there's a mass exodus of people in the area, right? Or is it so much as people are not having children or, right? There's older families, second homes, or short-term rentals? Right, so that's kind of step number one, kind of, kind of on the process. Just to kind of, just here's some legwork that I just did, right? So the sorority sororities, there's approximately 750 single-family houses, 57 multifamily dwellings totaling 481 units, right? So in terms of Cahill, right, Cahill encompasses more than just the village, right? But this is the housing for, just for the village, right? So are we going to see a mass, you know, input of kids and families into it? We historically haven't shown it, right? So these are just things to consider. Recent construction, this is not an exhaustive list, this is just ones, right? So I live by the Farmhouse Commons. They put in 40 units. We get two students from there.
Wow.
In one house, right? So yes, there's construction, and it's easy to say, oh, there's going to be a lot of kids from that, but the numbers tell a different story. Summit on the Hudson, right off 9W there, right? 64 units, 19 students, eight households. Those students come from, right? Country Meadow Apartments, that, those are the one on, is it North Street?
Yeah, North Street.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
53 units, seven students.
Wow.
From five houses, right? So once again, very few families moving in with kids. And if they do have kids, it's smaller amount than.
Yeah, so I think this is, this is really good data because to use Michelle's term, narrative, right? That's definitely a narrative that I hear. That all of this housing that's coming in is going to break the school system. And if I look at close, just off the top, that's 17%. Number, total units to number of students. So like 17% bring in a new student.
Right.
That's.
And here we have, what, 30 kids? But it's probably 30 kids over 12 grades.
Right, right, it's not one class.
Two kids, you know, it's not.
Yeah.
Things that we could absorb.
Because that is definitely something you hear. You hear, that's a, right? Like, you hear that, like, all this new building, how the school's going to handle it. That's how you're going to handle it.
Right.
It's 28 students.
Yeah, and these are numbers I asked Heidi to pull based on their addresses. That's where she gets information.
Fine.
I just have a question. So the Summit on the Hudson, did she pull that based on like the street name?
Yes.
Trinity Court or whatever? Because some of those kids then have always come here because there was a Trinity Court before they built Summit on the Hudson.
Okay.
So those, so that might even be a little inflated as to what they're. And if I'm not mistaken, they have more than 64 units now. They have 17 buildings with 10 units in each building.
I don't know if they're fully occupied yet, though.
Oh, they are.
They are fully occupied?
I just moved out and they were waiting to move in.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think if they have two or three open apartments, it's just, you know, but there are not a lot of kids there. I did not see a lot of kids playing in the neighborhood. So that, that, there is an apartment, there's a group of houses that are apartments there, but those kids have always come to our school.
Right, so it could be kids moving, right?
Right, yeah.
And Carol, just to clarify for me, that Summit on the Hudson, any of those 19 that would, or whatever the number is, that would go to elementary, that would be Riccardi?
It depends. They might go to Cahill because of their needs.
But just, but a straight, but no special needs, they would go to, it would be.
I think so, right?
Their homeschool would be Riccardi.
Homeschool would be Riccardi.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Right, go somewhere else because of reasons.
Okay.
Right, so let's just go, so we do need somebody to kind of dig into this more and kind of present this, right, even in more depth.
It would be interesting to know if any of those moved from other places in sororities. In other words, like, they might not even all just be true ads. They might be.
I've seen a lot of that as well.
Located within sorority. So it could be like, five additional kids or something.
I think you're seeing a lot of that also.
Yeah.
So, just moving.
That wouldn't be hard to crowd either.
Yeah, that would be, that would be interesting to see, or the narrative.
It's a word of the day, I love that word. It's true, though, it's.
So as we go forward heading this conversation about bringing sixth grade up to the junior high, right? My proposal would be to have a, for my guiding committee, approximately 20 members, parents, students, and then each of our bargaining units, as well as board of, board of ed members. I would propose an application process, right? Just so that we can make sure we get a diverse kind of cross-section, right? I want, I want to have a parent who might have a student with a disability, right? It'd be nice to have an ENL parent, right? So that we could try to think about all those things. The group beyond 20, I think it's kind of unmanageable, unwieldy when we're making, when we're making decisions.
Yeah.
I also feel it's important to say that, like, this group is really kind of an advisory group, right? So they're not necessarily going to make the decisions. They're going to recommend it to me and ultimately recommend it to the board to take action, right? So that'll also be clear.
So that would be a superintendent's committee rather than a board committee?
Yeah, that'd be my proposal. And then, I'm saying probably two meetings a month just because once we get going in September, you know, by the time we get deadlines, okay? Topics at current committee would be transportation, right? The structure of the school day for sixth grade. Is it going to be totally different than everybody else? Are they going to be kind of in their own isolated thing? Classroom locations, flow of the secondary campus, special classes offered, right? So what kind of offerings are we going to provide to our students? How are we going to staff those offerings? Are we going to need more support staff? Because there's going to be 170 more students there, right? All those things we need to, we need to think about and consider as we go forward. Then we need to have a conversation about the existing programs and staff at Mount Marion, right? So if we do move sixth grade up to junior high at Morris, that's two free classrooms, which I'm going to use no matter what. There's three, going to be three free, three, three free classrooms for sixth grade at Cahill and three at Riccardi, right? So that does present an opportunity to bring those things that are at Mount Marion to those buildings, okay? Expenses, right, materials, are we going to have to retrofit some of the buildings? And then, right, we're also going to be starting conversations about a capital project. So are there certain enhancements that we need to make to the building through a capital project for our sixth grade students? Not all of our students, but particularly sixth grade, okay? In terms of a timeline, so New York State does have a March 1st application to stay at approval for grade reconfiguration is what it's called. There would be a board-approved resolution, and I do have to submit a copy of the public notice. This is the actual application, it was a sample online. If you do want to peruse it, it does talk about, you know, grade levels impacted. You have to identify the number of students. It talks about staff and making sure that they are still supported and receive a kind of the same professional development as been in the past, okay? So, that is it for that. Other questions or anything you want me to look into? Yeah.
Just, I'm just going to do a bit of a brain dump from some things that.
Yep.
I, since we started talking about this last month, just kind of things that came to my head and some things that you sort of addressed in the things that will need to be considered. So, you know, I'm looking forward to those things kind of getting vetted to help understand. And I'm not expecting any answers to these things right now. I'm just kind of going through some things that I came up with or thought about. One, in doing this, are we expecting sort of any cost savings? Because the last time we did a district wide change, there was expected cost savings. But I look now that we're 56 estimated general ed sections next year when we were 58 in a four-building model, four-building elementary model. So I'm not sure what savings we actually did have from that. So I didn't know if we were expecting any savings when going through this process. And though I'm not opposed to a middle school model, you know, and I normally see that when the middle school is segregated from the high school. And those are where my concerns are going to come from as one, a parent and a trustee of how we're going to address those things. You know, one from a transportation perspective, you know, because you could have incoming sixth graders who are 10 years old, 10, 11 years old, hanging on a bus or walking in hallways with an 18-year-old. And now in our K6 model, yeah, we have an eight, you know, seven-year age gap, but the maturity difference between a six-year-old and a 12-year-old is a lot different than a 12-year-old and an 18-year-old. So that's just more of some of a parental concern. And, you know, the maturity, you know, level, a lot happened. I just had a seventh grader, and there's a lot that happened. There's a lot of innocence lost, I'm going to put it that way, when you go into seventh grade in a junior high. So are we moving that up a year? And that, that's a concern for me as a parent.
Yeah, and some of those things, we can also look to other districts to try to reach out, because there are districts that are K12 districts.
Yeah.
Everybody's on the same bus, in the same building.
Right.
So try to.
So that's just one thing. And then, again, logistics, and you're probably going to vet this out in some of the things that you put on there. Like, the junior high ended a week and a half before the elementary schools do this year, did this year. So those sixth graders, they considered, you know, where do they fall in ending the school year? Teacher certifications, we have K6 and 712. How does that work now in a, in a middle school model? And how does that impact the staffing in the buildings? And, let's see.[1662.25] And then, just, you know, is the, this the only model we're looking at to do? Considering, I know that when we did close Mount Marion, um, you know, we had talked about the Princeton model, and there was a lot of pushback, and a lot of people didn't want that, including myself, um, at the time. But I've grown a little bit, um, and, and, but, and. Well, my kids are older now, and I see sort of the benefit of having some grade grouping. I wouldn't necessarily the Princeton model, but if you had a primary and an intermediary school, um, where you had four, five, six together, where you had, um, that grade level, you know, where the sixth, the sixth graders don't feel like, you know, they have kindergartners in the, you know, just from a maturity standpoint, i- is that something that we would look at? A- and being able to group some of those grades? Because I, then I look forward to, in three years, we had seven elementary school teachers who are retiring. Like, would there be a benefit to being able to, um, collapse some grades based on the class sizes and not have to rehire teachers and actually save money that way? So those are my questions, concerns, kind of brain.
You know, I, I don't, I don't think you hit anything that that committee shouldn't be addressing.
Yep.
I, I don't, I don't, there's nothing there that's out of the, I mean, logistics, the middle school model, what's it gonna look like? The teachers, the, the timing, the transportation, I think it's all, I think that's the stuff that that committee has to sort through and dig through and come up with options and viable solutions, yeah.
I, I, I think, oh, one of the things you gotta look at is, uh, what do you hope to accomplish by doing this? Like, that committee should have a charge or a goal, so they're working towards something, so they're not just spinning their wheels as they go through that.
Right, is it to save money, to use efficient resources, to prepare for the declining enrollment? I mean, it may be all of those things, but.
You just nailed them.
Yeah.
Write those down.
Yeah. I mean, because I remember when we looked at it before, one of the things that we, that, you know, I found was that, actually, that it's like K through eight schools are actually very successful, right? And I mean, and that sort of blows it all, blows it all to hell with the buildings that we have. But I just think that, I appreciate, Christine, your, you know, thoughtful thinking, because I think there's a lot to think about, and I think we have some amazing resources, both human resources and, uh, physical resources, and I think really thinking carefully about them and not letting the narrative that may not be connected to reality.
Right.
Drive the decision-making. And I'm just appreciative that we are at a place where we can actually have that conversation in a way that's not so fire-laden.
Yeah, and I think, I, I agree with that, and I think that the primary question the public is going to ask is, why are we doing this?
Yep.
Yep.
So I think that has to be defined as one of the first goals of the group, in my opinion, and of the board, and of the, obviously of the district.
Yeah. I, I think one of the, I think one of the important things that come about it, um, that will have to be defined, and it's, it goes along both with what Dr. Haas and Michelle just said, is that component of what happens if you remove, if you were to create a sixth through eighth model with some of the other things that are at Mount Marion and stuff like that? And, and what would you do with the now available classrooms, right? I, I think that's an important thing to lay out. I think that goes into one of the discussions of why you would do this. And it's all about, and, you know, that word, that narrative word, right, is, everybody, everybody's always nervous about saying this, but one of the big things that drives that narrative of, we're overcrowded and we don't have enough room in our, in our things, is because people are still upset about closing Mount Marion. How many years ago now was that?
Six?
Six years ago?
Oh, no, it was five years ago.
Oh, three?
It was like three years, it feels like six, but no, it was only three.
I'm sorry, you got it wrong. Three years ago. Still, uh, uh, an elementary school has been closed for three years, and anytime you bring up enrollment, people point back to, why did we close Mount Marion? And let's reopen it. And that's just not viable, right, reopening it. So that's also something that this committee should look at, like, what, what's gonna happen with, what could happen with the things that are up at Mount Marion? So.
Right, good. Can I have Dr. Koppler to come and share, um, just a brief overview of the changes to the guidance plan?
There is a PowerPoint.
You got the PowerPoint?
There is a PowerPoint. Comprehensive K-12 guidance plan? Yeah, I just got it right in front of me.
Okay, so, I'll just let you know that, um, every year we do update our plan. And, um, this year we really focused on input that we got from the blueprint. So we start off with the priorities of creating a process where the parents knew what was going on with schedules, which was a major complaint to, from a lot of parents. We haven't gotten to the point where we are signing off, but I can tell you that in June, the students went home with schedules. And then, next week, I think, or the week after, another letter is going home to the parents to let them know what are the classes that they're signed up for. All the counselors did go into the English classes to give out, um, the course selection sheets, and they went over classes with the students. Um, and then they went back to visit with the teachers after the teachers had some time to discuss those classes with the students. We're gonna continue to have discussions moving forward to have consistent practices with all the counselors. And then there was an expectation that every single student on their caseload was met in person. And if that didn't happen, they had to show that there were several attempts, and they had to talk to the principals on why it didn't happen. So that, that's just to start off on how we started, um, working on this plan. This year, all the counselors were involved with it. We actually use PD days, so it, for me, it was important that every single one of them had a say. A couple of counselors and some administrators. Go to the second one.
Okay, just do it from there.
Just do it from there.
Just do it from there.
Oh, it's very small. The first one is just, uh, listing all the, um, counselors and grade levels. We did look at, one of the things on the blueprint was to even out, uh, counselors on having similar caseloads. So it has been rearranged for different, um, different numbers. We were not able to do the cohort model because we are, we are still one counselor short to do that.
How would the cohort model work?
So each one would have a grade level.
Okay, and they'd.
A true cohort, yes, each one would have a grade level.
And so we don't have enough counselors. And, and then this year, I mean, our previous plan had objectives and activities and expected outcomes and assessments, but this year we added, we, we linked it with the American School Counselors Association and their model. So we added, um, they have domains, which is academic development, career, college readiness, and social emotional wellness. However, you can address those, but when you go to the objectives now, you will see that we will list the domains that are there. And that each domain would also show how it lines up to the, um, national model. It, it's gonna, it looks, it looks big, it's a lot thicker. But when you go to, we had activities by month previously. Now it's in a table that's more in line, it gives you the tiers, it gives you the objective, it gives you the domain. So it's just a little more organized, and it actually tells you who will be responsible for each action. And of course, it's a living document, so there's things that are gonna have to be changed throughout the year. One of the things that we have to do is we have to make an advisory committee. That needs to be students and parents, administrators, teachers, and counselors. So that's our next, um, step to move forward with that. We also did add, um, New York State Commissioners Regulations, just so parents understood what was required of counselors. So that is also in the plan. And then, as far as the blueprint, if you go.
Slides four and five, I think.
Then one more. Oh, that's really small, sorry about that. That just shows, um, we really have done everything on the blueprint, or at least started. The only one that really is standing out is, well, two things, video resources. We're actually hoping that we can get the students in the CVP to make those, so that we can put it up on the counseling.
What, what kinds of things would that include?
So that would be like, it could be, who can you co-go to see if you're having trouble?
Okay.
You know, it just, just informational things, um, and.
Different way to present it?
Yeah.
Have it available?
Instead of, you know, right now, they'll go to classrooms and introduce themselves, but I think if kids could just click on something, or parents, they would know. It could even be like DASSA, like, what is that? And, you know, is there something going on, and how would I fill out a DASSA form? Things like that.
Some of the things we've also talked about too is like, um, videos like on how to access the parent portal and the student portal.
Yeah.
Right, so it's, it's stuff like that.
Great.
Um, and then the signature thing for the parents, we're still, don't have that figured quite out yet, but we are looking at that.
But we did send everybody home their course requests.
Yeah. And then we still look to do more parent nights. We did a FAFSA, we, um, had a financial aid meeting.
Who gets invited to those?
So the FAFSA one was eleventh graders and twelfth graders. You really should, I think, the financial aid one, maybe you should try to get the tenth graders, because, you know, you really wanna start looking early and knowing.
And your tenth grade year is the year that they use to determine your aid in your freshman year.
Right.
And so families need to know that, like, if you're gonna put a roof on your house, or you're gonna take a leave from your job, or your income is gonna change, have it change in their tenth grade year.
Right.
That's true. I mean, it's, it makes a good.
I'd say we gotta quit currently.
Difference in terms of financial aid. And, and I think that, and you, and it's not a conversation you can just have once, right? You have to have it multiple times, because you look at that FAFSA and you're like, oh my god, you know? And then you get, you know, because you have to fill it out every year.
Well, it's very automated now.
I know.
I just went through it. It would.
Yeah.
They linked everything to our tax return, it made it so easy, but it isn't.
I was a student forever, and my daughter is in school, and so I'm very used to the FAFSA, but it's, you know.
You wanna have all that information right next to you because it logs you out.
Yeah, exactly, yep. And kids who, yeah, anyway, homeless kids, I mean, it's, it, you know.
And I know that, um, Mrs. Vail and Ms. Malino and Ms. Jamie Heilman, they've been working on a new course selection catalog. It's pretty awesome, but it's not done yet, but, um, I think it'll definitely be more user-friendly, and it explains more what steps would be if you're a ninth grader, or what should you choose if you were, wanted to go into vetting.
And other options, yeah, other than college.
Any questions?
I just, a quick question. Um, when looking at the schedule of the counselors, um, I couldn't see it very well, but is there a twelfth grade counselor?
There is.
Okay.
The bottom.
Okay, I just, I thought it said.
But they have the old one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so she is.
You actually have it, it's just, it's a typo, like, instead of her in eleven, she's in grade twelve.
Okay.
Oh, that should be grade twelve for Jamie?
She's all grade twelve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Cohort, because the numbers worked out.
Ah, okay, got it.
All the seniors, because she's, and, right along.
Great.
She's also the department chair.
Right, she's our department chair also, so she has. Other questions? If you wanna be on the committee, let me know.
Anything else, Dr. Ursula?
No, good to go.
True topic, okay. All right, moving on in the agenda to G, which is business office recommendations, um, we.
Board member remarks, I mean, you can skip it, but you.
I figured we just.
Board member remarks. Heard enough of us.
Mr. Bellarosa.
Thank you.
Yes, no?
Um, yes.
Okay. Yeah, that, yeah, microphone, Christine, she's got Christine's, there she is, yeah.
I might expand upon this, um, going forward, but, um, I like to make mention every month about, uh, some annual observance months. This is Disability Pride Month, and also National Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. You know, as we go, I'd love to see, uh, recognition of, of, uh, these, these awareness months, throughout the school, throughout our, our district. Particularly because mental health and disabilities right now are, um, very forefront in people's minds. Due to, due to, uh, due to cuts, um, that are being made at, at, um, at federal levels. So, um, I think it's important for, uh, our families and students to recognize that they're, they are being seen by the community. So I plan to be making mention of those going forward. Thanks.
All right, thanks, okay. Mr. Toman?
Well, I'm surprised to be here tonight. This is the last place I thought I would be, but, uh, you know, it's certainly good to, uh, be part of the board and to help the community. One of the things I struggled with in coming back this time is, uh, I think it's the second time I've re-entered the board after being off for a year, was, uh, you know, what kind of vision would I come to the board with? And I think there's a, there's two things that I see. One, I was concerned that there weren't, uh, three candidates for three board seats. You know, I kinda, I stayed out of, uh, the loop for a year, and it felt good. But I, I, I thought, oh, there's gonna be a number of people who wanna be on the board of ed, and to my surprise, there wasn't. Then I looked at New Paul's, three write-in candidates, uh, there were no official candidates for the board. So one of the things I thought is to look, get together with the NISBA and see, you know, what we can do to get more, um, interested in people being board members, because I don't plan on being on the board for the next twenty years. The, when I looked, um, at the July Fourth Parade in town, you know, it's a, it's a great time. You feel pride in the community, you see your friends, your family, you see the kids coming through. And maybe that's something we need to have more of a school presence in, uh, to remind people. There was certainly a lot of community organizations in that, certainly a number of fire trucks, thank God there were no fires, but, um, I didn't see a school presence where normally we would, or maybe even an increased school presence, so people have that connection between the community and the good things that are happening in the schools. The other thing I'm concerned with is the funding, um, for the school district. When the, um, uh, budget was coming out from the governor, which was, of course, late, there was, uh, a provision to give more money to the Hudson Valley region for schools, which is a great thing, but that's a stopgap measure. We, uh, lose out on funding because of our, uh, the structure of our community. We rely heavily on property taxes, and property taxes constantly go up. If we had a statewide, uh, per pupil expenditure, like a uniform statewide pupil expenditure, say it was thirty thousand dollars or thirty-two thousand dollars, whatever that might be, and that was across every county in New York State, we would get a bigger share of state aid than we do now. We're penalized, uh, the way the formula's set up now. And I'm concerned poverty is certainly a big issue in Sorgerity. We're gonna have people who can't afford to live in Sorgerity if the property taxes continue to go up. And, um, during my time off, I was involved with the Score Store and seeing the needs that would come out for kids at Christmas time. I dealt with one family that had eight kids in one motel room, and the Christmas wish list would break your heart to see that stuff. And it's not all that visible in the community, but it's, it's certainly there. And those kids need a lot. The other thing I would certainly wanna look at is, uh, mental health services for our students. And again, we're penalized by the ZIP code. Your mental health as a student, your, uh, success in education shouldn't be, um, compromised by where you live in New York State. You should have equal access to all those services across the board. So that's what I decided I wanna come to the board with, uh, for my term this year.
Thank you, Mr. Toman.
You're welcome.
Mr. Welf?
You're good.
You're good? Mr. Malia?
Michelle, please, and no thank you.
Okay. Mr. Keller?
I think I'm gonna pass.
Dr. Haas?
I'm just thrilled to be here. And, um, um, I really, I wanna thank Michelle and Christine and Bob for running, because I am glad that we, um, didn't just have write-in votes. And so, and I, it's funny, Bob, because I had actually thought, I was like, oh, I think the board needs to have a float in the parade. So, um, and I'm really, I'm concerned about funding. I'm concerned about the recent federal holding of billions of dollars to, uh, state aid for schools and how that's gonna impact us. We have half a million dollars in Title I monies, and, um, that's a lot of, that's a lot of people, and that's a lot of things. And so I'm not sure how that's all. I know Dr. G is looking at what that may be and what the state has said they're gonna cover, but I think we really need to, I'm very proud of the work we did this past year in talking about the budget and keeping that forward, and really thinking about that out loud with everybody over the course of the year. And I just think we really wanna keep that in mind as well to sort of think about what those impacts might be and what we all as individuals can do about it, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Haas. I just have a couple of things. One, you'll see later in the agenda, um, the cell phone and electronic policy come up. And I know the, the, uh, the discussion has been that that is, um, you know, driven by the governor and the legislative, legislation that the governor passed. I wanna make it clear to everybody that that, this was coming whether the governor passed it or not. We had been working, we've been working on this for. We had been working, we've been working on this for about six or seven months and we were going to have a policy for the start of the school year regardless of what happened up in Halti. And I appreciate all the feedback that everybody sent in on the survey. And I think everybody, both, anybody who was pro or against this kind of idea had good, there was good feedback on both components. But I will tell you, overwhelmingly, teachers, administrators, parents are looking forward to this. They want it. And, you know, we are not groundbreaking here. There are other schools much larger than ours, some similar in size, that have already tackled this. So we have places to look and see how it's going and to take ideas from. But it is, like I said, you know, the only thing, the only thing that the legislative did for us was force us to have it in by August 1st as opposed to having it ready for September 1st. So I want to make sure everybody is aware of it, everybody looks at it and understands it, because I think the more people that understand it, it will help everyone involved. The only other thing I want to mention is, we talked about it a little bit before, in different, Mr. Toman mentioned it, Dr. Haas mentioned it around, you know, expenses and funding and things like that. Our insurance costs went up 3X this year from what they were last year to what they are now today. And what that will cause the district and this board to look at is everything that impacts insurance. So when we look at, when you are going to hear discussions about Mount Marion and about that building and that asset, because that's what it is right now, and it's, and costs us in insurance. So I just want, I wanted to get it on everybody's radar. Over the next few months, you're going to hear more discussions about Mount Marion and what we do and how we try and make sure that next year we can bring down our insurance costs as opposed to having them go up again. So that's all for me. Thank you. Can I move to G now? All right, next up on the agenda is G, which is business office recommendations. We have 1 through 6, which is a Treasury report, revenue and appropriations, internal claims audit, a resolution about surplus textbooks, and then our propane cost for the year as well as our fuel oil. Do I have a motion to accept items G 1 through 6?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
By Michelle.
Second.
By Ms. Keldor. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right.
Aye.
All right. Okay, board action items, there's a lot of them. We have page 1 through 33. I'm not going to go through and read them. So I'm just, if anybody has any questions on any of them. I have a motion to accept items H 1 through 33. Motion. Mr. Toman, second it. By Ms. Bellarosa. Okay, so now, if anybody has any discussion or questions on any of the 33 items.
Can I join the second grade dance club? Sorry.
No. This, I mean, this has everything from creation of the second grade dance club, our agreement with Diaz Memorial, with the ambulance service for the year.
I just want to make a note on that.
Yes.
Make mention of the fact that I think I can vote on, I think we determined it's not a conflict of interest, but just on the record, I am on that board.
Yes.
So if I have to recuse myself from 18, I will do so.
Yeah, there's no money that exchanges.
Yes. But thank you for bringing that up. Okay. Any questions? Any discussion? No? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion moved. All right. All right, aye. Committee reports. Ms. Bellarosa. Any update on audit? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. And facilities.
So the work at Morris Elementary, the paving work is going to begin the 14th. It should be four weeks. The playground will be off limits during that time. I know another notice went out today from Principal Jean Greco reminding the community that the playground will be closed during that time. In terms of insurance, we will be asking the Rees Group so that they have a risk mitigation expert or, I forget what the proper title is, coming to our facilities meeting to kind of go over some things that we need to think about and perhaps do to lower our risk overall and become, get a better inventory. We have gone out for an RFP for a construction manager, so that closes this month. So we'll have interviews for that and we'll select a construction manager which will assist us with the next capital project.
Okay. The policy committee, real quick, I mean, the main ones are on, we just went through the agenda. We approved the second reading of the cell phone electronic devices. We approved the second reading of the maximum temperature for school buildings. I mean, that, those were really the discussion, the key discussion and it was at the last meeting. Dan, anything to add on the policy, I think?
Just, just to put out there too, like we did review the code of conduct, the safety plan as well. And then next up would be the attendance policy as well as family engagement policy for August.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Jay. So this is our second public recognition. If anybody in the audience wants to address the, okay. No, no, you're good. Okay. Okay, accept a motion to recess an executive session for the purpose of discussion around contract negotiations relating to the employment of the individual.
So moved.
Ms. Keldor? Seconded by Mr. Wells. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We will be coming out of executive session to adjourn. There will be nothing voting on anything additional. Thank you.